... by Ms. Bond. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, we are now back to open session. May I have a motion to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Coran and a second by Mrs. Bond. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
And Mr. Lyons?
Yes. Okay, moving on to public address. The Montgomery County Public School Board sets aside up to 30 minutes for members of the community to address the board on matters of public education in Montgomery County. Each person who is signed up to speak has up to three minutes to address the board. When you come forward, actually, I will call your name, and when you come forward, please state your name and your address, and then, once that is completed, you have three minutes to address the board. At this point, I have two people who are signed up for public address, and with that said, we'll get started, and then I will ask if there's anyone else in the audience, after those two have spoken, if you would like to also address the board. So first up is Coltrane Munrich, or Monrich. I'm gonna get your name right, eventually, I promise.
Second time you got it right. Coltrane Monrich, 323 Newtown Road, Shalsville, Virginia. I come to you again tonight to ask you to rescind your votes on the new school time change. Again, negative impact is far too great not to say anything. The negative impact is far too great to just look away. This hasty decision made me question the school committee of the start times integrity on the research that they did on the school start times, and what I've found is that the committee has only used one website for their research. Every bit of their information came from the grassroots website. How is that research? When you're only looking at one group's opinion, I would like to know, why was that overlooked by the superintendent, by the board? Because I know if I researched something like that in high school, I would've got a failing grade. I would've got a quote. Not enough resources, try harder. I leave you tonight on the last note. We're not going away on this matter until it's properly addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dana Lacy.
Good evening, once again. Follow me for a minute into a world I'm more comfortable, a world where I've served the majority of my life. Say that you just drove off a car lot. With a new car, you've been saving up for purchase for years. You're so excited, you can't contain it. It finally happened, but in a short amount of time, you're involved in a car accident. It's minor, maybe a fender bender. A few dents, but not a total loss on your car. You feel you're injured and require medical attention. Fire and rescue arrives, and immediately begins cutting the doors and roof off of your drivable vehicle, even though there is only minor damage. You're devastated. You can't figure out why they're destroying your car for no good reason. Your investment's being destroyed, you don't understand, and you're desperately pleading with them, why are you doing this? But they continue to ignore you. There's no need to cause as much destruction, it was a minor accident. So this is extreme. Do you know why? Because in the fire service, we have a rule that's called "try before you pry." It means do the least amount of damage to accomplish your goal. Basically, when we arrive at an accident, we'll do something simple, like opening a door, to gain entry, before we try something more intense and destructive means of entry. When we arrive at a house for a fire alarm, and it doesn't seem that there's danger to a homeowner or occupants, we'll wait for a key holder, maybe search for a hide-a-key, or look in through the windows, or find another access point, to make sure all's all right without causing destruction, like breaking windows or breaking down doors. Just because we have tools to destroy things, doesn't mean that we have to use them. We try to use simple measures before we get more complex. That just makes sense, and it doesn't destroy something that isn't damaged. We're held accountable for the damage that is done, and it should never outdo the damage that is caused by whatever we are called for, be it a crash or a fire. Hopefully, you follow me. You say adolescents need more sleep to be at their best. I don't disagree with you. Most of us, in fact, don't. However, currently, your plan is like my scenario. You arrive in a minor accident, tear the car apart, even though you didn't check the door handle to see if it would open. You just go on and ignore the police to stop. You cause more damage than was necessary. If you change the elementary school times to earlier, you're causing more problems than you're fixing. Your own resource sources state that even 15 to 30 minutes is more in the morning prior to school leads to the goal you want to accomplish. So may I suggest you try the door first. Move the secondary back to 20 to 30 minutes and run the school schedule as it is. It'll minimize the impact on the students, family, and organization in the community, while still accomplishing starting school after 8:00 a.m. The dramatic effects will be drastically improved, and you will be praised, because you successfully achieved your goal without ripping the community to pieces unnecessarily, just because you can. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, signed up to address the board tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the board this evening? Seeing no one, public address is closed. Our next item is consent items. Unless any board member has anything to pull from consent, we will consider the consent items approved. Okay, hearing none. Am I moving okay, Mrs. Brown? Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Our next item up is our personnel report. Do I have a motion to accept the personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Coran and a second by Ms. Graham to accept the personnel report. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel report is approved.
May I just make a comment? Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. By your actions this evening, you have appointed three new administrators to Montgomery County Public Schools. First, Glenn Tony Diebler is recommended as Assistant Principal at Christiansburg High School. He attended James Madison University, Old Dominion University, and Virginia Tech. He's worked for the Floyd County Public Schools for the past 17 years as a teacher, an assistant principal, and most recently, in a four-year position as Principal of Floyd County High School. Second appointment is Todd Lewis, who's been recommended as Assistant Principal at Blacksburg High School. He's a graduate of Virginia Tech and Radford. He taught mathematics in the Floyd County Public Schools, served as an instructional coach, a remediation specialist, and a math teacher for 12 years in the Roanoke County Public Schools, as an Assistant Principal Supervisor for Mathematics for two years in the Roanoke City Public Schools, and most recently, two years as Supervisor Instruction for Bodatok County Public Schools. The final one is Carol B. Slonka, who is recommended as Principal at Gilbert-Lincoln Elementary School. She also attended Virginia Tech and completed administrative administration and supervision work at the University of Virginia. She's been a classroom teacher for nine years, worked in Franklin County Public Schools, has been a reading specialist, a school testing coordinator in the Roanoke City Public Schools, a literacy coach in Fredericksburg City Public Schools, and a reading specialist and literacy coach for two years in Stafford County Public Schools. Her most recent assignment has been four years as Assistant Principal at Montclair Elementary School, Prince William County Public Schools. None of these candidates are here with us this evening, as their school systems are still at work, or at least two of the three are, and hopefully, they will join us by July 1, and you'll have an opportunity to meet them firsthand.
Just a quick question. How many administrative positions do we still have open right now, do you know?
We have the Assistant Principal at, or we have the Principal at Blacksburg Middle School, and that process is coming to a close. I don't think I missed anything else.
Auburn?
Auburn Elementary Assistant Principal, yes.
So there's two positions still waiting. Okay.
Two are still open.
Okay. Next on the agenda is financial reports. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Coran and a second by Mrs. Graham. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We have paid the bills. Next on the agenda is superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements, so I will turn over the meeting to Mrs. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. We'll start out this evening, the superintendent's agenda, with two grant items. The first one is Project Graduation 2015 Summer Academy. Montgomery County Public Schools has applied for project graduation funding of $14,891 from Virginia Department of Education. These funds will provide remedial instruction during summer 2015 for seniors, juniors, and sophomores who have passed SOL courses but have not earned the verified credit that they need to graduate. This is recommended for your approval this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Franklin and a second by Mrs. Bond. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The grant proposal is approved.
The second grant is Creating a Culture of Design and Discovery for STEM Education. Virginia Tech has requested $597,781 from the National Science Foundation to offer a six-week summer professional development experience in STEM education for up to 36 teachers over a three-year period. Participants will gain exposure to authentic inquiry-based projects and interdisciplinary problem-solving, enabling them to create a culture of STEM learning in their own classrooms. This is recommended for your action and approval this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Franklin and a second by Mrs. Graham. Any discussion on this? This was presented to us several months ago, correct? And we have never moved on, is that correct?
I don't believe it's the same one. I don't think, I don't see Laura. There she is, Laura, yeah.
Now, this is the first time that I've brought you this one. It was submitted in late April, but I didn't have all the budget information from Virginia Tech in time to get it on the May agenda, and that's why it's coming to you now.
Okay. All right, I just want to clarify on that. All right? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Grant proposal is approved.
The next item is our instructional presentation for the evening. As you know, one of the goals under student achievement in our current six-year plan is to implement PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, at the division level. We've talked about PBIS on several previous occasions, and tonight Sharon Zuckerwar, who is our supervisor for character education and several other interesting things, is gonna present on PBIS. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Good evening, Ms. Blackburn and members of the board. As Ms. Blackburn mentioned, I'm here to kind of update you on where we are with the implementation of Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. And as we begin the implementation, this really is the question that we're looking at. How do we build division-wide systems to engage, encourage, and empower? And I think that's such a powerful question for us to answer as we move forward. As you know, in our six-year plan, we are very focused on making sure our students graduate college and career-ready from our schools. And in order to reach this vision, we have to provide all of the supports that our students need, both academically and behaviorally, recognizing that these impact each other, and will certainly impact the success of each of our students. But this is what we want to avoid. We don't want this to become just one more thing that lands on top of people. And so, the goal is really to implement this in a way that supports the good work that's already happening in our schools. So we're gonna start, as you've seen this many times, with a common understanding of the components of effective instruction. So this is still at the foundation of the work that we're doing in all of our buildings. And we have to understand that systems change. In order to be effective, there are certain things that have to be in place. These are the musts. You have to have that vision, the skills, the incentives, the resources, and an action plan. Because anytime any one of these things are missing, we can see the different feelings that we'd see at the top, confusion, anxiety, resistance, frustration, and without that plan, people feeling like they're stuck on a treadmill. So part of the implementation work is going to be very intentional about making sure all of these pieces are in place, so that we can have this kind of effective systems change long-term. There are gonna be three areas of focus that we'll be working on: systems, practice, and data. And we're gonna spend time on each of these, making sure we're building all of those systems of support, to develop what's already working, like I mentioned, and then assess the effectiveness of how to make it even better. And I want to show you a couple of different models of what PBIS and what the state is calling VTSS, which is Virginia Tiered Systems of Support. All of this work, as we're moving forward, is making sure that we're discussing how we organize ourselves and how we organize our supports for students. This is not about tiering students or placing students in certain tiers, but tiering our supports for them. So this is, looking at this triangle, we're talking about academics and behavior. It's not two different triangles. It is one system of organizing all of the supports that we have for our students. And another way of looking at this, and I think this is interesting, if you think of it as kind of that lava lamp, it's our children moving up and down throughout those tiers of support based on what they need, academically and behaviorally. A great example that I heard of this is, you know, sometimes I'm carrying many, many bags and boxes into the building, and I need to push that handicap button on the door that we have over there, in order for that door to open up for me. Most days, I don't need that. I can reach out, and I can pull open that door. But when I'm carrying lots of things, I'm gonna need a different level of support. So if we think of our students of, you know, if they're in math, they may need some different levels of support, then they don't need that in reading. So we're making sure that we have all of those levels of support in place for our students. And the other way of thinking about this, too, I think this is a powerful thing that we remind all of our folks in our buildings, is that when we're talking about Tier 1, those are those universals, all of the things that are in place that help us be consistent, that help us teach our expectations, explicitly teach, not just assume that everyone knows what we would like for them. And then, those are on the bottom for everybody. That's that foundation. And we continue to build, if a student needs more additional targeted supports in math, in reading, in different behaviors, in different spaces, then those are in place for all students. And then, if, again, the students still need additional support, we can continue to offer that more intensive support for students. But nothing ever goes away for those students. It always builds on those layers. One of the things that we have done in Student Achievement Team this year is a process of resource mapping. So we've already begun those conversations of, what are we already doing? What are all the amazing supports that we have at some of the different tiers, Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3? And so this is just an example of some of those supports that we talked about from both the academic and behavior side, whether we have interventions for reading or math, whether we have interventions for different behavior, like bullying prevention, even our character education programs, all of those things that are already in place. So we're not, nothing's going away, we're just trying to pull up those things together. So big picture, PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, is about using our data to drive our decisions. It is both, like I said, the academic and behavioral supports, and the big picture outcome is to create an effective learning environment for all of our students. And ultimately, like I said at the beginning, we want to avoid that vision kind of block that's squashing everybody with so many other things that they have, and to create that effectiveness and efficiency for continuous improvement. I did want to share with you quickly the five features of PBIS, and these are some of the things, as we've begun to work with schools already, that some schools are already putting into play. So those positively stated expectations, like I mentioned, explicitly teaching those expectations, acknowledging student success, procedures for correction, so we know sometimes we're not gonna get it right, so how are we consistent about those consequences? But then, all throughout, using the data to make decisions. And in addition to those, one of the things that we're going to be very, very intentional about as we move forward is looking at our interventions and supports with the lens of cultural relevancy. And we've talked about this before, about how do we make sure that our staff and our students are aware of what they bring to the table, so their culture is represented in the work that we're doing with all of our students as we move forward. So that's going to be a part of all of the work. I wanted to share with you some of the accomplishments that we've started with this year. We have done a lot of work collaborating with Ms. Blackburn's Student Achievement Team, doing a lot of this work with that group that has already pulled together. We've been working over the past two years to work on readiness, building readiness and capacity, making sure that we're building a strong foundation for this. So you can see some of the schools that we worked with this year alongside our Radford University T-Tech, the technical assistance folks, to provide some of this training, and I was a part of that as well. But I think, big picture, we're trying to help people understand the why of this work before we really get into the what and the how of it all, so that we come to the table understanding why this is so important. So that our professional development opportunities have really been focused on readiness activities this year. Moving forward, we do have some exciting opportunities for us. We will be participating in the Virginia Department of Education's School Climate Transformation Grant, which allows us the opportunity to train in Virginia Tiered Systems of Support. They're calling that VTSS. So we will be a part of that Cohort 3. We are putting together a Division Leadership Team that will be heading to Richmond in a couple of weeks to begin the initial plans for what that's gonna look like for implementation. I'm excited to say that they're actually offering the opportunity for us to have Division Leaders, Division Trainers. So I will be participating in that, so that we have some in-house folks who can continue to do this work and train forward. We still have the DOE to lean on, but we'll also have, we won't have to be so dependent on them. We're gonna be working to reinforce and revitalize our Student Assistance Program Teams. We have those in place in our buildings, but we want to make sure that we are supporting them and kind of forcing, providing those supports underneath that. As a part of the Project Aware Grant that we've received through the Virginia Department of Education, we have the funding to hire two Student Assistance Program Coordinators. And so that's going to be extremely helpful, because, as you know, many of the jobs of a Student Assistance Program falls on the backs of the administrators and the teachers. And so having that additional support in the division, that's going to help them do the file reviews, keep the meetings running, being able to do follow-up, even direct services, are gonna be available to us through that grant project. And then, big picture, we'll continue to integrate those tiered systems of support. So continue to identify the needs, and then try to figure out how to fill all of those gaps. So that's the work, excuse me, just for this first year, and then continuing to move that forward. Just as a final note, the things I want us to consider as we move forward with this, this is not about making students learn or making students behave. It's about creating environments that increases that likelihood for them all to be successful with positive behavior. It's really about providing the supports for our staff and our systems to implement practices that are going to bring about that change. We want to make our students successful. We want to help them be the best that they can be. So it's putting those systems supports in place. So this is the work that we have in front of us. This is long-term work. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight, but I do believe we've begun the process of the beginnings of the implementation of PBIS, and I think we're tying it to a lot of really positive supports for our students. So thank you all for the time to share an update on this work.
Any questions, board members? I do have one.
No.
Okay.
Just gonna think.
The coordinators that we're hiring through the grant?
Yes.
Is that grant gonna be ongoing?
This is a five-year grant.
Okay.
But the work that we're doing, we've stated from the very beginning, is, part of their job is to figure out the sustainability of this work.
Okay.
So we're working with a program out of Nashville called Stars. This is what they do, is help reinforce and support student assistance programs. They've already begun to talk to us about sustainability ideas. So currently, these two positions are grant-funded, but the hope is we'll find ways to be able to continue those after the five years.
And we've not hired these two yet, or we have?
Correct. No, the job is posted, we have not hired.
So we have potential funding for this position, at least for five years, is what we're saying?
Mm-hmm.
And how are those? Two questions, follow-up with that. Will there be a need to add to that in the future, possibly? And how will they, will we have a coordinator for elementary age and then secondary? How will that pan out?
The plan right now, as far as what we predict in the future, I'm not sure. I think that's gonna be very needs-based. As we get these programs going, we'll see what kind of needs come out of that. And I think we're going to be very intentional about going slow and making sure that we're being responsive to what is needed out there. Currently, the plan is to put these coordinators into strands. They're gonna be mostly working with secondary by strand, and so we're envisioning large strands, small strands, working with those. However, we've also identified that there's a lot of work that needs to be done at the elementary levels to provide support. And by a lot of work, I'm just hoping that that means that these folks can be on-call to the elementary schools, so as they are working in their student assistance teams, that they're able to call these folks in and be a support for them.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon, we appreciate it. The next item I have this evening is the No Child Left Behind Title Funding Application. This is a yearly process. You have to put together a plan to describe how you're gonna spend the funds that you'll receive. The plans are based on anticipated funding, and will be adjusted when official allocations are received later in the spring. It's presented this evening for your information. It'll come back to you at the June 17 meeting, but we do have Rhonda with us if you have any questions that you'd like to ask about the plan.
Any questions, board members? Okay, Rhonda, you're off the hook.
Next time.
Next item is also a plan that you see on a regular basis, and that's the Montgomery County Public Schools Gifted Plan for 2013-2018. The Montgomery County Gifted Plan was provided to school board members for review on March 5, 2013, and for revision in July of 2014. The regulations governing services for gifted students require that the school division has a comprehensive plan for the education of students that covers all the components listed in the agenda item. There's quite a lot of detail there for you. The Virginia Department of Education conducted a technical review of our 2013 through 2018 plan in October of 2014. The revisions to the plan reflect their recommendations or commendations from that technical review. Tonight, the plan is submitted for your information. We have Diane Knaff with us, and I'd like to thank Diane and her gifted teachers, as well as the parents from the Gifted Advisory Board, for the work that they do with the plan each year and updating it. So at this point, if you have questions, the floor's open, and it will come back again on the second meeting in June.
I do have some questions. Thank you, Ms. Knaff. I understand that you guys are doing a new streamlined process in your evaluation?
Correct. What we've worked towards is making sure that all of the services that we have and all the identification process across the division is the same. And so what we've done is, we're looking at a tiered identification process. So we've put that in the plan last year, and we've piloted it this year, and so it's looking at how do we make sure that we use our gifted resource teachers' times wisely, but make sure that we're making good decisions about students when we're looking for identification.
And you can get them services faster that way, right?
Correct.
And I understand you have a gifted resource teacher that was named Teacher of the Year recently?
Yes, I do, and the division, and I- And the division and I have not gotten that information yet through the Virginia Department of Education nor VAG. But Terry Vangelos, Mrs. Blackburn and I wrote for her and suggested that she be our representative from the county, and she was selected from Region 6. But they're behind on sending information or written information to myself or the division leaderships. I've only received something in email. So Terry will be that representative.
Well, congratulations. You guys have a lot of teachers that are awarded with that in your group.
We sure do.
So, and do you specifically just do the gifted program, or do you have other duties as well?
I have shared responsibilities, so I'm the GRT at CPS in addition to my supervisor duties.
Okay. So you're getting the hands-on of everything that you get to figure out and make happen?
Correct.
Great. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, board members?
Well, there's just some information.
Okay.
That I'd like to have. As far as our gifted program, as far as our minority students.
Okay.
And our disadvantaged students, you know, what our numbers look like.
All right.
If they're reflecting that these students are being screened correctly and that they're being given the opportunity to participate in our gifted programs.
Okay. And on that note, we've been talking, a test that, or a normed standard test that we'd had and had gotten, it was taken away. Ms. Blackburn and Dr. Graham came to me this year, and we found some money through some of the leftover funds at the end of the year and had an opportunity to put that back in full-time this year, but because we couldn't get the technical support to do that, it will be back in the budget for next year as well. So I did use that as a piece of screening for what students, we will be able to use that with. So I'm glad to have that back.
Because I know several years ago, we eliminated the screening.
Correct.
Right? And you're saying that's back now?
Yes, it is. I'm excited about that. And so next year, we'll have a division-wide screening. We're going to use the N-NAT 2, which is designed, it's a pictorial test, so it's not, it's for our English language learners, as well as that whole list of sub-pop's that I think that we can support.
Okay. So if I can just see those numbers and see how we're doing, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Diane. We appreciate the information. Next item for this evening is a discussion of July meeting dates. I put this on the agenda so that the board could have that discussion. I know that you will probably have some special meetings that you may have coming up through the summer, but I wanted to see if you wanted to keep these general meeting days, or if you felt to just hold the days in case you have special meetings. I've looked at the business of the school system, and it would be possible not to have regular meetings from the perspective of moving the business of the organization forward.
All right, board members, the obvious thing that we are going to need to meet in July possibly is going to be the superintendent search process, which we're going to discuss. I'm just going to say. Any thoughts about, do we want to keep these dates just on the calendar as potential dates to use those, and as we get closer, decide whether or not we need to keep them or to move them?
I would say yes.
That's my general feeling, so.
Since those days are already on our calendars, I think that's smart to, if we need to use.
I took them off my calendar before.
Oh, sorry. They might have to go back.
All right, so we're going to keep them on for now, but with it in mind that it's probably going to be used for those purposes. So if you don't have school, if there's no school business that we actually need to do for those particular dates, then, you know, you can plan accordingly. But my guess is that we'll either use those dates, or we'll shift them a little bit if we need to accommodate our superintendent search process.
So we'll keep the dates on the calendar as potential regular meeting dates or special meeting dates, and as we work with agenda prep, we'll talk about.
Correct.
Whether we actually need them or don't need them.
Correct. All right.
And then the final item, I'll turn over to you, Mr. Lyons, as the superintendent search process.
Okay, board members, you should have, I think some of you received them tonight. Some of you may have received them prior to tonight. The RFPs have been submitted to us. Our next step in the process essentially is to, whether or not we want to continue with the RFP process. I know, obviously, some of you have not had a chance to read over those. Others of you have read through them in detail. I don't know, you know, because not everyone has read through those, I don't know that we can make a decision tonight on what to do moving forward. Ms. Karan has read through them twice now, I think you told me.
Soon, soon, I'm going to recite the whole.
Recite the whole thing. My guess is that should we decide to move forward with the RFP process, we would need to score those, each of those four that we've been given. She has done, already started to do that in her own way with a chart. I have confidence that she's doing a great job. I know Ms. Drake said that we do have a scoring process that we typically use for that. I think using that in conjunction with what Ms. Karan has done and us getting a couple of other sets of eyes on it from the board would be a wise thing for us to do should we decide to move forward with the RFP process. I would ask, possibly, if I could, just make this request, that we have, if we decide to move forward with the RFP process and we have a committee that does the scoring, that one of you members who have been on this process before, Jamie, Penny, Joe, be a part of that?
I don't understand the committee part to this.
Just as almost a subcommittee to help score those RFPs, to make sure that everyone's thinking through them correctly and that we give a fair shake to each one of those RFP submissions.
So why wouldn't we all score?
Unless, yeah, all board members like to score.
Yeah, I mean, if you all want to score them, that's fine, but.
This is our decision, our process, so who's going to meet us? We should be the ones who are scoring and making that decision.
Okay, that's fine as well. Do we have to do that as a part of a meeting, or do we, can we do that on our own privately?
I moved today, so I didn't have easy access to the microphone. You can do it privately, but should the board decide that they, that you want to meet to discuss the RFP, that is something that would qualify for closed session status if you want to meet and discuss the scoring.
Okay.
So it really is the pleasure of the board how you move forward. Some RFP committees meet as a group and do the scoring, and some RFP committees work independently and then submit the scores to whoever the designated person is. And then those are given to Angie Bland to compile and tell you who the highest scorer is.
Okay. So I don't know that, since we're missing two board members, not everyone has had a chance to read through these. I don't, I mean, what is your, everyone's general feeling about the RFP process? Do we want to continue in it, in general, no votes, but what's your general thoughts about it? Comparing what we have here, obviously, with what the VSBA has presented to us as well.
So I'm not understanding what would be the alternative to not continue.
Well, we can either pick the RFP process, or we can say we just want to work with.
VSBA, that's the.
That's the decision.
RFP process.
Yeah.
I guess my concern with the VSBA was not as much community input would be a part of that. I think that's necessary.
Okay.
But if we don't use VSBA, then we will be scanning each and every one, right?
Scanning.
What?
Like, okay, so the applicant isn't.
Ms. Bond, if I, if I may, if that's something that the board desires, you can ask additional questions of the RFP firms.
Okay.
Not the RFP firms, the superintendent search firms in the RFP process. So we did one recently in my department, and after looking at them, there were a set of questions that we had that we wanted each vendor to respond with. So if that's a concern that you have when the board discusses the RFPs, then you can add that as a question for everybody to respond to. Does that help?
Yeah.
I think some of them even outlined in the RFP process how they would go through the applicants, given our criteria.
Yeah.
Yeah, just my initial read-through of the RFPs, I was impressed with some more than others.
Yeah.
So.
So the next step will be we all score and then pick.
So do we want to do that? Why don't, so Ms. Drake, send us the form to score each one of those. I guess email it to us all, and then those will, we want to put a timeframe on this?
I would like to have a date. It helps me to stay on target with that.
Okay. Is by next meeting too soon?
Nope.
I don't think so, personally, but.
It's too late.
Too late?
Next meeting, the July 16 meeting?
16th or whatever, yeah, whatever that day is. 16, 17? I don't know when it is.
That's the next meeting? That's about the next meeting?
14 days from now, whenever that is.
July 16?
June.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, wait a minute here.
June 16. June 16, so let's have it done by then.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm going to push back because today's the second. That's two weeks from now. That's a lot of time.
Can we not turn that into sooner?
Yeah, can we do it on the, like, the 11th?
Or, yeah, turn it into you by the 9th, 9th or 10th, when we're here already?
Yeah. In terms of discussing which one.
Right.
Which, you know, it has to tie into closed session of a meeting, all right?
No, we can do a special meeting.
Oh, I see.
That's why I'm suggesting the 11th.
So shall we set another special meeting besides the 9th and 10th?
Why not?
I mean, I'm fine. I'm just saying.
Well, we do have two board members who are not here.
Yeah.
Could we also tie it into the 10th, or is that too much?
It's too much.
It's too much.
Too much?
Yeah. Just come back the next day on the 11th.
I'm like, Ms. Franklin, I think I'd like to get it moving a little faster.
I'm good with the 11th, if that's what board desires.
Could we not get the, could we not get the information to you by then and then discuss it?
On the 16th.
On the 16th, opposed to getting it to you the 16th? I mean, you're still bumping it. Three meetings a week is a little tough for me, I'll be honest.
Yeah, I mean.
That's.
I mean, it's not a matter of getting you the information, it's a matter of us doing the work, and then we come back and discuss it.
Well, but if we've, okay, well, then if you're prepared to discuss.
So we, so what we would need to do on the 11th is everyone come with their scoring, we'll compile them together, we'll discuss, and decide to move forward from there. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I would say the plan should be.
I'm fine with that.
We can make sure.
So that would be, with the 11th, that could be an actual closed session meeting, is that correct? All right. Yes. Oh, time.
Six o'clock?
Six?
Yeah, six is five. I can't be here before six.
Okay.
No way.
6:00 PM, on the 11th.
Which I would be probably maybe a few minutes later.
We just have to check with Mr. Ivors and Ms. Wusley.
Ms. Drake, would you send out an email as soon as possible to just all of us and confirm that date so that Mr. Ivors and Mrs. Wusley will have that information and they can chime in on that?
In case that doesn't work, I'm ready to roll, folks. The 15th, that work as an alternative date? The Monday?
I am out of town that day.
And I know Mrs. Graham is not going to be at our June 16 meeting. She has already stated that, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's, timing is what it is, so.
We'll just see what the.
We'll see what we can work out.
Mm-hmm.
So the 16th, what do we have for closed session? Is there anything?
For closed session on the 16th?
We put that as fine of wrapping up.
The evaluation.
Evaluation, but we may very well be done.
We may be done with it by the 16th. We reserve the 16th to do that if we needed to, but the hope is that we would, we'll be done with it on the 10th.
Okay, and that's a large, large agenda that night with the capital.
Yeah, it seems like it is a pretty large agenda on that night. So we still may meet briefly if we need to, to finalize that, but it would be like a 15-minute closed session where we sign off on everything if we've needed to make any changes, you know, grammatically, all of that kind of stuff to what we're submitting.
Because I'm envisioning that, you know, coming to a decision, once we've scored them, had a bit of discussion, that it shouldn't take long.
Shouldn't, it shouldn't. I agree. I agree. All right, so the 11th, 6:00 PM. Will be our next step in the process. Get back to my agenda here. All right, we're moving on to unfinished business. Do any board members have any unfinished business that they would like to bring to Hearing none, let's move on to new business. Any board members have any new businesses they would like to present?
Well, certainly, congratulations to all the graduates. I know many of us attended the graduation ceremonies at different schools. It was quite awesome to see those students walk across the stage and get that diploma and move on to the next chapter in their lives. So we all wish them the best. And I did, went to announce that I'm going to be running for the District Ee School Board position in the November election.
To piggyback the graduation thing, if anybody happened to see me leave Christiansburg's graduation, my son and his girlfriend were in labor, and she, I got there five minutes too late.
Wait a minute.
Well, he was. And I was like, oh my gosh. So please pass that word along that it was for a great reason. And she is here, name is Kinsley, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm a Mimi, I am not a grandma.
Either way.
Okay, new business announcements, informations, we've kind of moved into that. Anything else that we need to announce?
Oh, sorry. I did that, sorry.
My, it was also attending graduation, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
It was also attending graduation and how excited it was, you know, so wishing everybody success. It was a nice weekend.
Some of our sports teams are still active.
Yes.
And particularly Christiansburg's baseball team.
Baseball, exactly.
Is at a level that they've never been at before.
Absolutely.
So just keep our eyes and ears open for those young athletes who are still charging on even though school is closed.
And despite the rain.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, announcements and information? Okay, upcoming school board meetings, we just added one. So we will meet, we'll meet three consecutive nights next week.
Yeah.
This was a short meeting tonight, so come on.
It is a short meeting tonight. We are out, good night, we are doing awesome.
And we did take off a joint meeting with.
And we did, oh, yeah, just want to reiterate that. We did take off that joint meeting at the end of, no, end of June. And we will reconvene with the Board of Supervisors on August 31st. All right, with that said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Adjourn.
So how much did she?